Going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at by thirty-two. And let's go ahead and start with flag salute. Thank you. Ms. Tammy, please note that all five board members are per result. And now we turn it over to your turn.
All right.
This evening.
Thanks for being here, everyone. Uh, let's jump in with uh what we're trying to accomplish tonight. So. Uh, our first objective and how we'll spend probably the first hour to two hours is uh working collaboratively to identify. Uh, potential board goals and then focus areas that then will use to inform the development of our twenty-five, twenty-six strategic plan. Uh, which will be implemented, monitored, uh, as well as reported on to the board throughout the school year. So that'll, that'll be the, the first. Kind of big chunk and that will require a lot of board discussion. And then uh number two, we have um, we wanted to go through the school board trainings that particularly as we have a number of new board members. Um, what we can do to get everyone caught up to speed, making sure uh we know. What's expected, roles, responsibilities, uh, like we talked about pulling Kevin out of retirement, getting him lots of work and. Making sure he's staying busy and not relaxing too much. So we'll finalize some logistics planning. I, I remember this was years ago, Scott. I'm not sure if yet, you must have been here for this. We did our strategic planning. And we did this conversation and then all of a sudden, one of our board members just said. Why are we even doing this? Uh, what's the point? So uh, always important to start with the why. So I wanted to bring us back to some research that was done. This is a guy named uh Dr. Marzano and Dr. Water, Waters, and they did the largest known quantitative study. On uh the impact of school leadership. So they looked uh over three decades. They looked at about twenty-eight hundred school districts. And three point four million uh student data points. And what they found uh was first and foremost, district leadership actually matters. It does have an input, impact, which is. Very important. So what we do really does matter. And then another important finding was around uh. Boards and districts setting goals uh and making sure we have goals that are one uh that have collaborative input from stakeholders. So. As you know, I see Jen has her homework out. Uh, we looked at, we had all that survey data from um previous in the year. So getting. Touching base with our stakeholders, families, communities, uh, Mr. Cooper, Rodney, students first and foremost. Uh, making sure we have their input on what they're looking for out of a district. Uh, we want to make sure they also found that goals are focused on student achievement and student experience. Uh, another big finding they had was that for districts that were successful, the board uh was aligned and supported with their goals. Where if we set some goals tonight and then all of a sudden Eric gets mad and says, well, I don't really care about math. Uh, and tries to sabotage that, that would not be good. So making sure we have board alignment and support. Uh, like we talked about continually to monitor these goals. So setting up a system so that we're reporting back to the board on our progress uh throughout the school year. And then finally, and uh my dear friend Anne is here to make sure that we're aligning our resources to these, these goals that we were funding our priorities. So that's kind of our whole why of why we get together once a year and, and look at goals and focus areas. Our agenda, I'll do some quick outcomes and why. Uh, then we'll set, we'll start with uh our vision, our, our three main buckets. Academics and programming, um families and community. And then there's this kind of the third bucket is traditionally this. This catch-all around facilities, safety, student experience and culture. We'll have a quick discussion around um values and then we'll jump into those trainings and logistical uh pieces. Quick overview of a timeline, uh July and August, we meet. Tonight and we uh start this process of setting these goals uh in August, we'll finalize those goals formally at the August board meeting. And then we get in a rhythm of uh at the end of trimester one, we'll come back and report uh the progress of those goals. And then adjust as needed. And then we'll do that at the end of the winter trimester and spring trimester as well. And then we start this process all over again. It's a continuous improvement cycle. Alright, so those of you, I, I think Scott mentioned he'd done this seventeen times, been through uh some strategic planning. Uh, but those of you that, that maybe have not done it that many times, uh our, our goals, just to organize them, we typically put them in three big buckets. Like I said, the academics, typically a community bucket, and then finally that catch-all bucket. Looking back at past practices, this was part of your, your homework. Again, uh Jen gets a gold star, Kevin, I see pulled his out as well. Um, you can see some of those past goals that we've set. And uh, we don't have to get ultra-specific tonight. So sometimes, for example, we set very specific goals such as. Uh, we'd like ninety percent of students to achieve the proficiency ranking on the winter's dibbles assessment. It's very specific, timely, measurable. Those are great goals. But then other times, we also have broader uh focus areas like. We need to improve technology service to students and families. So, and we can do both. The biggest thing is that uh the district is hearing from the board. On what your top priorities are, and then we can, can kind of uh. Uh, flesh out the, the language and the wording and, and bring that back to you. So with that, let's jump into our first bucket, which is yellow, um our academics and programming. And what we did uh was Tammy and I. As over the last six months, as, as this board has been um board members. We've made sure whenever you kind of highlight an issue, we make sure to write it down so that we can revisit it and know that it's a topic priority. So what we did was we went through and. These are all the areas previously identified by the board. So uh expanding CTE and industry certifications. In preview, improving uh reading, writing, math, science and social studies achievement. One thing you'll notice on this. Is uh what I did for any uh. Pretty topic that was a theme on the parent or staff survey, I underlined it and bolded. So that way we know that this was also a, a priority for our, for our families. Uh, we've also talked about strengthening transition programs from third to fourth grade, fifth to sixth and eighth to ninth. Um horizontal, horizontal alignment and standardization of ser- services and support. Uh, I grouped together, we've got all these high school initiatives. So we've talked about early graduation. What, what do we want to do about that? We've talked about. Senior year, how do we make it valuable for students? Um AP dual credit opportunities and making sure we're. Offering the right classes for AP classes. Uh, we've talked about implementing the ASVAB. As well as um communicating our student pathways. So there's a lot of high school initiatives in there. Uh, we've talked about tag improvements and enhancements uh and also creating more opportunities for our high achieving students. Uh, alignment and clarity in our interventions for our struggling students, particularly around elementary literacy. Uh, reducing achievement gaps between boys and girls. That's a theme I've heard from this board. Uh, enhancing our AI skills for both students and staff. As well as, this is what I'd love to see too, uh personal finance. How are we teaching personal finance and are we equipping students with the financial information? So. That's the list that, that, just the initial list that I've heard of that we can start discussing. I, I threw in a Stephen Covey quote uh. Because we can do it all, but at the same time, it's also good to narrow and prioritize uh different areas. So he said, you have to decide what your highest priorities are. And have the courage pleasantly, smilingly and unapologetically to say no to other things. So with that, uh, we've got a few just discussion prompts for the board as you guys start to articulate. Uh, what you believe the highest priority should be. And then also, are we missing anything on this? Uh, what needs to be added? So. Uh, three quick discussion items and we can just flow after that is which item should be our highest, highest priority and why? Uh, are there any critical priorities missing from this list? And then three, are there any items that might not rise to the level of board level priorities?
And Joel, you said the uh underlines reflect the, was it the parent or the student?
Um, anything that popped up on, we grouped the parent survey and uh the parents and staff survey. So. It, it's combined. If it was on the parent or staff survey as a goal or, or kind of one of the key themes.
But not the student one.
Oh, yes, and the students. Sorry. Yeah, thank you for, for correcting that.
And of those underlined ones are, any of them up there, ones that were mentioned more than others?
You know, um, they were just, if they're bold highlighted, they made the key themes list. Uh, so. Uh, if you remember back and it's in one of those packets, the top, uh, the top item that I know was a party was sped and behavior improvements. So that was the most. Uh, there's also, I think culture was really high on there. Bree, is there any? Any other main ones?
I think the reading, writing, math as well, just like academic enhancement was, was a theme.
This, the personal finance, I remember that being when you and I were going through the survey responses, like the top of the students like input as far as. What they wanted to see more curriculum, what was it? I guess in cooking, something. It was like all life skills.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, we've talked, previous boards have talked, uh, and we've creeped things about a practical skills class. Um, and that's. We've looked at, we've done a couple different iterations of that, but that seems to be something people are interested in again.
It's a couple of points. This list, all these, has survived two boards. It started in twenty-three, this current year. And migrated to the new board, which made very few tweaks to it.
Yeah.
And now is in front of this board. So this haven't changed all the best. There is one missing, I think.
Yeah.
And that you've got a, usually got a bullet that says enhanced performing arts participation, increased student participation. Did you move it to the?
You know, I listened to a past board member who's still on the board. Who talked about uh rights rightfully so that. Those connections are more of a safety issue than an academic issue. So that is, as we get down to our third, yeah.
Cause it's quite balanced between those two.
And it really does live in both. But yeah, that, that's, that's it earlier.
How many industry certifications do we currently have?
Oh, man.
Eleven pathways.
Yeah, loving pathways and.
We, over fifty, I want forty to fifty, I'd say, was kind of the big enhancement. Um, we, we awarded over. It was like six or seven hundred, I want to say, last year. And I think of that, of that. And Doc, these are ballpark numbers. Uh, I'd say we, we offer between thirty to forty different. Uh, credential certification opportunities. We probably gave out around six to seven hundred.
Have we done any kind of process? So, I mean, Scott, number one, that's really helpful to know that there's, there's consistency and. Probably some bouncing up and down as far as priority in some, in and out, right? So. If we just assume that this list is reasonably solid, like. Have we done any work around? Like for the CTE programs, going to the leadership of that program and saying, hey, like. Where do you guys see the biggest strengths? Where do you guys see the opportunities? And kind of asking that input. For the people who are frontline or whatnot.
Yeah, CT has been kind of a step forward. CTE is the one of those things that has carried on over multiple boards. Um, so we do a monthly CTE leadership meeting and have those conversations. Um, most recently, I was going into, so about this time last year, the conversation was where are gaps in our credentials? So. Um, so, so I'd say yes, but I'd also say. That doesn't mean those conversations need to stop, right? We know that, that the um. The economy changes, there's different demands for student skills and needs. So that's something we need to continue to do. Um. Kind of think how to incorporate that into a board goal.
And it's not even CTE, because it's just like, I don't know about you guys, but I look at this and I'm like, I have a perspective on most of these. But I also, there's a level of humility of like, I, I'm not the person who is actually interacting with this on a daily basis. And so it's like. I guess what's the, the first step to me is like, how do we formalize having more input into? You know, this type of decision-making to the board from, from these people who really truly understand this. Um.
I think we actually made the shift on that a year ago. And we had been under the CTE programs counting the number of credits that were given out. And Shan made a fuss about it and she was right to the end. The process probably couldn't have been smoother. But she said, we need to ask the people on the other end whether they're getting what they need and expect. So we should count certifications instead of credits. And that's when we started doing that. And it did improve, I think, the outcomes of the programs once that happened. What was involved, that was the engagement, was ask industry what you want. It is what we're giving you, what you wanted. I just assume that because we give credit, yeah. What did we do? What did academics do? Check, did you do the seat time?
Mm-hmm.
Kelsey, one of the things I, I think I hear you saying too is the importance of listening to students and staff. Um, one of the things as we shift to another one of the, you know, the, kind of the culture or listening is uh. Or building bridges is a staff steering committee, so that we're regularly meeting with staff to have those conversations. And that would be completely new. We've, we've never had a, a staff steering committee. That's something we've, we kind of put on. Um, a family steering committee, so that way we're regularly meeting. And then also um ways to continually listen to students.
Right.
Um, so maybe setting goals and reporting back to the board on how are we, how do we have these feedback loops? To make sure that we are being responsive to our stakeholders and what, what they need.
Well, and also just honoring their expertise. Like, I'm, I'm not educated in the tag program or how that works. And so. We need to come in and be like, well, it should look like this, this, this. It's not appropriate, right?
I, I'd say that, and I, I would also say, don't sell yourself short in the terms of your experience as a parent of, of. You might not be an expert in, in uh tag, but you might say, hey, I'm not hearing enough or getting enough communication. Or I'm not sure about, like we've talked about, reading scores. So, so I think you do bring a really important perspective uh as a parent. You know, each of us, I think, bring an important perspective and kind of applying that to this lens. But agreed that. We kind of make sure we're listening to the experts as well, um, those on the ground doing, doing the work. So I hear definitely set a goal around like uh feedback loops from, from stakeholders.
And even I think that could be in a, like a, a specific format, like. You know, where do you see the biggest gap in your program? Where do you see your goals? Where are you here for students? So. That it becomes a conversation that is standardized, you know, I love standardization, but. Across all these things, so we can really have that input back into this process because. If we looked across all these, you know, different bullet points and I could say, we could say, oh, here's this theme of these resources are needed or, or. Whatever it is, like consistently, like I think that would really change this conversation.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if this is going to fall under academic or if it's going to be under the family and communities. But I feel like there needs to be some sort of communication aspect to this. Um, I was recently having a conversation because my daughter's doing. One of the courses through COCC, they barely have any students signed up. They've gotten more now this week. But. A lot of it's because there's no exposure, like the way they're advertising, we're putting papers up on like Parks and Rec or something. Maybe like. Why can't we try and do the parent view blast or the email blast and get these kind of opportunities up there more?
Yeah, I think you're spot on. So much so that you got my number one bullet point for my next slide. Is uh standardized school to home communication where.
I did gloss over it because I didn't read closely enough.
No, no, no. I flipped it over to the blue. So this, this is around our family communication where um community where. We need to, we, we implemented Parent Square, a whole new communication tool. And we, we hoped that I think was kind of the major themes from our uh family survey was uh just almost like a. Some people reported awesome communication, that their teacher did great, sent, sent letters home every week. And I've had those teachers. Uh, where my kids in those classes were, man, you get a daily or a weekly newsletter. And then we also have, I think, some, some classrooms that parents don't hear anything. So I think that's why I'm getting to one of Kelsey's, where that. Standardization, where we say, here are the, here are the expectations that we know are going to happen in, in all classrooms. And then we can also use that as. Also, how do we make sure that additional things like these opportunities are communicated properly to, to families?
Can we go back to the other one? Uh, so I don't want to just mention the fourth bullet down about alignment.
Yeah.
So I wonder if we don't need to focus more on vertical alignment. Because if I understand correctly, one of the reasons our test boards struggle. Is because we're not teaching the right thing at the right time and the sequence with the testing. That's vertical alignment. That's not horizontal alignment. It is important building the building that you're teaching the same foundations, that's horizontal. But vertically, you know, what you do, eleven, what supports twelve. That sort of sequencing. And I don't, we don't, we don't have it right, or our test words would be better.
So bullet point three up there.
Uh, it's been one, two, three, four.
No, three is above that, that's vertical.
Oh, uh, well, also the transition of students.
Yeah, but that's at specific grade levels at three, because that's where we lose them. We know that. Uh, it always moves smoothly.
Um, Scott, on your vertical alignment piece, uh, believe it or not, this, this was vertical alignment was in our previous uh plan. And last year's professional development plan was the first time that we've set aside specific time and back to school week. To have the math department from the high school meet with the math department from nation, and we've put that in the plan again. But I think it's, I think it's something we need to. Continue to keep up.
And I, I think we just have to have pre-influence and stuff. Real cool. Just map those benchmarks from the state and the standards that we're testing on against where are we at in the curriculum?
Yeah.
Are we teaching this stuff? But if you teach fractions in the fifth grade and you test it in the third grade, you're not going to pass fractions.
And to add to that, and if our teachers aren't using the same language when they're teaching fractions, then it just adds to student confusion. So we'll put a vertical alignment piece to that, that goal. Is there anything on our academic list that should, that, that is, doesn't need to be there?
This, this is a chunk of work.
We don't have anything around special ed. I don't know what that goal is, but I know it's a big enough population.
Yeah, it's kind of related with the alignment clarity for interventions as well.
And then there was a, that's a big uh goal sheet for sped.
Which other? Yeah. Yeah, we will um. Said, I mean, as you guys saw, based on families and staff. Sped is essentially our number one uh opportunity for improvement. Uh, so. So putting something in the academic thesis is huge. We can look at what kind of measures make the most sense with that.
And I think it's fair to share with the rest of the board that we have a problem with Kelly. In that we do a really good job of sped. Our parent communication with. With families and sped students is better than anybody else's in the region. Ben Lepine happily tells people, you should go to Creek County. They do a great job over there. So we, we end up with extra burden because we do a really good job.
Well, maybe compared to that, but that's not hard parent pursuit. I mean, for instance, surveys, like communication.
It was, it was a theme and we've, we've heard both of those things. We've heard, go to Creek County. They'll take care of you. And we've heard from our people here of, we're missing the bar uh and need some improvement.
It's a solid, but it could be works.
Yeah.
It's kind of how it is.
Don't put that on a poster.
Yes. That will not be our theme. Six, four years, so.
But I did, I think it's important to call that population out. If you leave, omit them.
Yeah.
And you say, well, you're in there by reference. Doesn't mean we're concerned that we are.
You want a bullet point then?
Something.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think a bullet.
We'll, we'll add a specific sped.
I didn't know that. Cause it's on the next.
Is it in the, I think that, and that one, it's in the green too. Yeah.
But I, I mean.
And I think that was around safety, I want to say, responding to uh parents of. The behaviors are out of control. So I think putting one.
I think safety is appropriate.
Yeah, yeah. But and I think we're gonna have it in both of some sort of academic goal around there, but then also keeping it in our.
Maybe, maybe it's supporting our staff and being able to deliver superior special education. Education, because when I hear it's from staff, is, you know, it's overwhelming.
Yeah.
To deal with some of what they're expected to do. Maybe we build, we focus on.
They definitely don't have the tools. No, I firmly believe one hundred percent, they do not have all the tools that they need.
And they say that.
In order to support. You know, the, the people that, or the students that we do serve.
Yeah, and I think it also goes back to um Kelsey, your point earlier about. Listening to staff and Jen, we've talked about this a lot over the last couple of years of like. Our, our classified AAs that are working with our sped students day in and day out. Are we hearing from them? And are we actually listening? Because they have some of the, the, the best advice and recommendations and sometimes they're, they're not heard. So.
And, and I think. You know, we, we mainstream our special ed students. They're, they're not corralled in a separate classroom with the responsibility of an IA that's. They're in the ordinary classrooms. An ordinary teacher needs to be able to address whatever.
Your IA is in there with them.
Yeah, right.
You know, but I mean, when you have fifteen out of, you know, twenty-two students that are. Your responsibility as somebody who was not properly trained, I mean, it could very well get, you know.
Overwhelmed.
It could get very overwhelming quickly. So. They, you know, training staff, encouragement, you know, making sure they have the tools that they need, all of the things.
Yeah. Evan, you have a unique perspective. Thirty years in old ed. What, what do you think? What are we missing? What's, what's good up here?
Well, I, I think I'd like to hear what, what tools they feel they need. Um, that would be helpful. Um. Yeah, that's a unique bunch. We had six schools and over fifty percent of our students were sped. Um, sometimes there's real highs and there's real lows. A, a lot of it has to do with family. Or lack of support. Putting that on teachers, IAs is, is sometimes I feel like there's so much put on. The school district when I think back to when I was a kid, you know, that. That now our teachers have to be psychiatrists and psychologists and. And good math teachers and English teachers and um. It's difficult, but I also understand the um. The behavior a- aspect. Uh, my good friend Pete from uh. Uh, Pioneer before he retired, uh, him and I used to talk a lot and, and um. He, he sent at a board meeting one time as uh he was getting. Um, kind of uh whipped around a little bit about attendance. And his comment was. I have some kids that are taking up valuable oxygen of kids that want to learn. And so I'm not all that concerned when they don't show up. Now that might sound harsh. But it is the truth, and I think some of the feedback you get from some teachers is. Man, like. This kid or that kid is so disruptive that it just, it, it messes with the whole learning experience. Having said that. There's this, there's a special type of person to deal with that, that type of kid. Uh, and it really comes down to mutual respect. You know, I, we used to tell our kids all the time. We will respect you, but you must respect us. If that gets broken on either end, it's not going to work. So you can have an outburst. But now we're going to talk about it and we're going to figure out different ways how, how to deal with that.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a rough one. I don't know how many sped students we have. Um.
We're, okay, we're about fifteen to eighteen per spent, so.
Yeah, that's a lot.
That's, that's right.
That, that's a lot.
And I, and I think a common theme that kind of touches on what are, what you said that I think it needs to be a focus is. Listening to our staff around the tools that.
Yeah, I would be interested to hear, you know, a wide range of what, you know, do we need more um. Pe- teachers aids in the classroom? Do we need more outdoor activities for kids? Um. You know, we've, we've found that to be quite successful, especially kids with, you know, specific problems, ADHD.
Yeah.
Um, things like that was, was get them out, you know, let work off some of that energy and uh. I know there are programs here uh that deal with that and, and that can be real successful. Uh, it doesn't always lead to academic success, but it sometimes does.
Well, keeps them in school, you know.
Right.
The crowd, right.
Awesome. But it does take a special type of personality uh. To not fly out the handle and, and kick everybody like, sorry, you're gone.
Yeah, I have to brag on, on the Pioneer staff, you know, it's an alternative school. Uh, so they do just an awesome job navigating that. Need for, every student has their own need, comes with their own baggage, their own trauma. And then also realizing that, and we have to, we have to do school and, and we do need rubber rails and, and. Kind of balancing those two, so they do an amazing job.
I think that's a good idea though, to find out some real specifics on, on what they feel like they're lacking, what do they need? Um.
Because that was something too, when I was looking at the data that um Bree had bisected was. You know, when we asked the question, what was it? Do you have the training you need to do your job? There is, there is a level of ambivalence there, like, uh. You know, it wasn't like startling, like. You know, it wasn't like startling, like, no, I don't, you know, but I, I feel like there was this overall theme of, hey, like. There's some kind of trading needs out there, things or resources that if I had those, I would feel better to do my job and. It just would be great to get visibility into what, to your point, Kevin, you know, what are those things is um. Some, sometimes they're easy fixes and sometimes they're not, you know, but we don't, we don't know.
And I think it, it does relate to what kept coming up was behavior issues and how, you know, how that's handled, which. I'm, I'm not familiar with, you know, how, what is the, what is the sequence that happens when you have the real. And, and that I'm sure differs from elementary to middle to high school. Um, but it'd be helpful to know what that.
Yeah.
Uh, process was.
The other thing that we did over a decade ago. Um, was we did a deep dive into the special education population. What we wanted to look at was, what's the level of misclassification? What we found was it was a whole group of kids sitting at the bubble of performance and they were special ed. They had been misclassified because they were behind.
You're right.
And somebody made them special ed. So when we carved that off and we carved several percentage points off the population. That meant that the staff that remained to deal with special ed had a lower caseload to deal with. We had got most kids with intentional instruction back into mainstream, which is one way you can address it.
I think that's why.
No, I think you're absolutely right.
You just periodically gotta go through, cause systems get lax and.
We, the first thing we used to do when a student came to us if they were sped was we immediately gave them the tape test, which I don't. It's test of um basic education. And of course, it was always math, right? It was math was usually the biggest and, and, and reading too. But usually what we found, and to your point Scott, was. They missed something in third grade or fourth grade. And once they miss that, like fractions or whatever it might be. The spiral began because they kept advancing grade levels, but if they didn't have that basic. Um, uh, knowledge, they were just constantly lost. So many of the times, probably most times. Um, kids were well below sixth grade level, well below and a lot in the third, fourth. So we had to go back and really pound those basic. And sometimes you'd see a really quick increase. And the, and many times after a year, we would go back to special ed and say. I don't think they need to be on there anymore. They're, you know, they caught up. Um, but it's, they, sometimes it's just missing these little pieces and. And attendance has a big thing to do with it too. Uh, because as they go, uh, as they get behind academically. You know, then all kinds of social things kick in, all kinds of feelings of, right? And then all of a sudden you'll start seeing attendance slowly go down, down, down. And you know, that's it. Most of the kids we got. Their attendance was fifty percent or lower. And that's because they, some of it was just being embarrassed to go in the classroom and be like, I don't know this. I don't know anything you're trying to teach me.
And there's a fiscal piece to that too, because your ADM is capped at thirteen percent. I think that's another of your total population is eleven.
Yes.
Uh, eleven percent of your total population that can be designated for which you get the double ADM.
Yeah.
Or paying for that. Well, with a kid who's in the classroom that is diagnosed and you're dealing with an IEP level of service. You're spending the money that the state isn't giving you. So if you can carve those off, then you make your money go further. Uh, with your system. So it makes a lot of sense to pursue that strategy. Make sure it's the population we need to be serving.
Well, I guess my question is then too, is like, okay, so say a kiddo ends up at Pioneer, like, is there. A way for them to wrap back? There is.
That is a great, uh, great point. So that was actually something the board identified probably five years ago. We tracked the number of students that went to Pioneer, got caught up on credits and went back to, back to the high school. Um, one thing that the high school and Pioneer have done an, an awesome job is, it's really become real cross uh cross enrollment. Where uh we see more and more students taking classes at both, which is what you want. You don't, you don't want this like uh. Uh, stigmatization of uh Pioneer. Oh, I'm an all student kid. Oh, now I have a label. We want them to, to be able to do both and get those CTE experiences and be a pioneer. So. So that was a, that was a deliberate board goal about six years ago that we really, I actually say. Really improved and, and have kind of resolved. We always wanna keep working on stuff, but, but that's a big deal of getting kids back to the high school. Eric, anything standing out for you?
I mean, I agree with. Harvey love. In the sped program that shouldn't be there. I'm also concerned about those bubble kids. So like identifying who's falling behind that isn't necessarily needing an IEP. But needs extra help. Uh, cause I know a few of those kids personally and they, they need the help, but they don't always. Get that attention in the classroom. And I know they're trying to do things like the, the fruit salad programs or the group ability levels together. That usually seems to help, but sometimes every once in a while, there's a kid that might need a little extra, but he's, he or she is not quite. Low enough to like catch the tension.
Yeah, one of the things that.
But I'm worried they're gonna transition into those kids that start to miss something and then as they get older.
Is that where others comes in?
A- avid is a program designed for students in the middle, first generation uh college students to get them the extra skills and support. So that's, that's definitely a piece is, is avid. Um, outside of Crooked River, we don't have the avid program at our elementaries. Um, the, it never took off. So when we launched Steen's pillar, the focus was arts, technology and science. So that was kind of their thing. Uh, Barnes Buote thing was uh culture and language. Uh, and then Crooked River's thing was avid. So they each had their own identity. It gets back though to this idea of horizontal alignment that we have guaranteed services at each school. So. Avid is designed for those, those students in the middle. Uh, it doesn't solve everything.
No.
Uh, like, like nothing does, but it, it certainly is, the intent is to target students in the middle.
Yeah, or even kiddos that are like low, it, it like.
One thing uh Bree and I were actually working on today that relates to that is uh a stoplight system. And this is something we did at the, we did at the high school. We really got into data tracking at the high school uh. I don't know, a decade ago, you can see, if you look at our graduation rate, you can see as we started tracking. Individual kids and said, what's going on with this kid? Uh, it really started making a difference and that we saw our graduation rate grow. And we're, we're starting to apply that to the elementaries next year. So uh, we.
That might catch it.
Yeah, well, recreates this little formula and depending on metrics based on attendance, referrals uh and F counts. It spits out whether they're a green light, doing fine, a red light, need immediate intervention or a yellow light. And I think to your point. What are we doing for these yellow light students? Um, it is huge. So I think that's definitely something that we can, we can focus on.
So simple, but it's so effective. If you look, if you have every teacher assess every student every week. Imagine from beginning of the year to the end of the year, how much attention you pay and you have an intervention waiting on the other end. For the ones that are gonna identify the problem. That was huge when we did it. I don't know why.
Every week.
Sort of, every week. You'd have to be consistent because what you wanna do is catch a kid early.
Right.
Before they start falling into trouble, you should keep getting back. But if you get to it early, you can get right on the fixing part.
Yeah, not just waiting and pushing.
Calling the parents since they. Through them. Cause your parents, that's parents' number one bitch is when they probably, when things aren't going well and they start, their opening question is, why didn't you tell? Well, why didn't we tell? That system, we got a reason to call.
Right.
Uh, there's another element to it as well that's uh, it's tricky to navigate, but one of the important things is. When you're just pulling data, like a third party, like from the district office versus you're that individual student's teacher. Uh, it gets, in, in one way, it's, it's way more objective. Because as, as our teachers, they love it and they wanna say, no, 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 he just didn't do well on that. Or no, 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 he was busy. When you're looking at the data objectively, it really says like, no, 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 there's red flags. Yellow light, what are we doing about it? So that's, that's another piece and that's. Relationships with, with our teachers, with our principals to say, hey, we're looking at data, here are some things we need to check out. So I think. Eric, I think you're absolutely right on this middle of the road bubble students to, to not. To not forget them. Uh, so often we focus on, sometimes we just focus on our IEP students. Sometimes we just focus on the AP, the dual credit. And we leave out this, this middle, middle strand. So um.
Didn't we have an emotional component of that last time too? Somehow teacher assessing emotional state for intervention. You know, there's probably. Wrong back in the day. There was somewhere we had.
I see you want us to prioritize these bullet points too. I almost think you need prioritization for different levels. I so like the way we're talking, elementary definitely needs reading, writing and math in my mind as well as. Something along the services and support, like we've been talking. But it's completely different for the high school where those things should be addressed at the elementary level. And by the time you get to high school, we're probably looking for it. The CTE programs.
Yeah, we want to really.
Continue the dual credit.
Yeah.
One thing too, uh, the horizontal limit is generalization of services and support. I think. Uh, one thing that Mr. McMahon had talked about last, oh gosh, it was, I, you know, probably four minutes ago. But we're talking about providing services for kiddos in extreme poverty and. You know, if you're talking about like, we just have a lot of nonprofits are really disparate and, you know, we're trying to link things. And so. To me, it's like, how do we make that ecosystem of support? For kiddos like stronger and more cohesive and ea- easier to navigate um.
Yeah, Scott and I have talked a lot about um. As federal funding shifts and some resources, you know, budgets get realigned. There is gonna be a big gap at some point for those, for those families and, and the school and community organizations. Are gonna be standing there and Kevin, to your point earlier on, schools are asked to do, it seems like each decade. Another pile of things and, and I only expect that to grow. So I think that's. I, I believe I have something in our third bucket, the kind of connected student safety piece to talk about uh services. And if not, I have it written down, so we'll get there. Any, anything else on this list to be added or taken away? Prioritize to the top?
How, how big a deal is early graduation?
Billion dollar deal.
Yeah.
That's a really good question. So. Early graduation is one of those things where there's not a clean answer. Cause it really comes down to the kids. So there is a financial cost to the districter. Um, so when students graduate early. Uh, they're no longer enrolled, so we no longer collect ADM. Uh, we looked at some data, I wanna say in March and April and. Had a higher than we've ever had by essentially double. Where we're starting to talk about real numbers, you, you know, um, in, I wanna say in a million uh of, of the cost. However, as we start talking that, then we also start talking about these individual students and the stories to where there's some students where. They're taking care of siblings, uh, they need to go to work. So. They need to graduate as soon as possible so they can jump into a career field and start working and supporting families. Um, there are some students that need to graduate early to enroll in a, in a, in a college. There's some students that need to graduate early, otherwise they're gonna drop out where they say, I'm so over school. I'm eighteen, I'm tired of being here. Thirteen years in. Um, so there, there's just this balance uh and it's something that, the numbers are getting. Are getting uncomfortably high for me. Uh, so that's something that we have a plan and are putting in some guardrails. Uh, to put in place before it's just like, oh, you wanna graduate early? Great. Here's the plan. You'll graduate in after next trimester. It's. Uh, individual plans that need to probably help me out with this one. Um, just putting in more guardrails because it is. It, that, that gate is getting too wide, even with recognizing students have individual stories.
Because one of the things that as we started digging into it too is, um, you know, the assumption was people were getting CTE credits or certifications. It was all good. Well, you know, through the discussions, it, it came apparent that wouldn't even have to be seventeen to, to enter most. Participation. So like kiddos were having this gap year of like, hey, they're graduating before they'd be eligible to go into. Technical field and then they're just falling off and not going into any kind of field. So at least from my perspective, that's, that's a huge branch. But when we're, yeah, this is.
Well, the other thing is that's within your control. We require twenty-six credits to graduate. You can make that twenty-eight, nobody will graduate early. You want to, but that comes at a cost because it'll probably lower your graduation rate if you do that.
And it might, and it might also lower your enrollment because there are other schools that they have to choose to go to.
And they'll crowd your facility.
Almost thinking incentivizing. And that goes dual path that we've been talking. Where we're talking internships possibly, whether they're through the school, CTE expansion. The AP expansion, give them something that they can work towards. They. They get the benefit that they would get by leaving early.
Right.
But they get to stay.
Work experience.
And it's not as expensive for them possibly, or it's, it's more beneficial in some way.
Think our, our work and uh our work on like being able for students to be able to get their AAT. Uh, while at the high school, I think that's gonna help some of those higher achievers stay in. Um, and not graduate early. And another, Scott, to your point, I mean, this one is in our control. Uh. Another big thing is we shifted the trimesters, which now allows students to earn more credits earlier. Where if we're on semesters, it would slow it down. But uh, to Anna's point, this one's tricky because as we started down this road. Seven years ago, we looked at other schools, a student can transfer to an online school and graduate like that. I, and, and so then we lose the enrollment, we lose con- that contact with the student. They're in on a less, you know, rigorous program. So. So I initially said, it's not, there's not a clean answer on this one, but I believe a, a no brainer uh step for us. Is to put more guardrails around this uh because we should not have a, a quarter of the class graduating.
But trimesters also save money on staffing. There, you're able to offer, offer more.
I think the bigger thing from my perspective is, is really segmenting out those kiddos like. It, are they, why are they graduating early? Is it like to get through and whatever like? Because it's like, maybe we don't present the whole issue, but if there's. To me, the biggest option would be like, who are the kids that they stuck around? They're gonna get leave with some kind of certificate or they're gonna. Go from this to employment. And it's like, how do we support those kids the best? Um. But knowing, you know, there's just gonna be some kids who are like, they're out and let's not chase that like.
And there are those, there are those kids. I think, Joel, you said that kids would say, I'm done. I don't care what you offered me.
Yeah.
I don't care, you know, what. Um, I've just done. Uh, but I think, you know, maybe um. Working with local businesses, tying into the certifications and having that carrot at the end that says. You know, we'll, we'll come. Your last credits are going to be work experience credits. And that's a five month job at this company. And it can be a mill or a whatever in this town. You know, Les Schwab's, if we just went and met and said. Now here's our types of programs. We would like this kid to continue. And if, if the reason the kid is leaving is because financially I have to get a job. I'm trying to help support, you know, brothers, sisters, family, whatever, or I'm living on my own. Um, which there's a lot of those, but uh maybe you can keep them in with the tail end being. You've got two, two work experience credits to go or three. And this is how you need to.
I like that. Yeah, combining the incentives with understanding the population and, and.
And I, I found over a lot of years that especially in this town. Businesses is very willing to work with you. Very willing to work.
Do they have to be eighteen now? There's some.
Some, some jobs, yeah. Some, but you know, I think you could find others that uh seventeen you be able to. To get some spots.
Well, I think it, it becomes interconnected with this personal finance thing too, because I know from talking to Sean that. You know, a lot of kids are living at home and they're like, they go out and they're making seventeen dollars an hour. And it's like, well, that's. That's amazing when you're living at home, when you're not paying a rent. It's not amazing when you're paying your own groceries. And so, you know. Really having the, you know, sometimes we just all have to experience the reality of those, but I, I do think that's, that's. I I do think that's that's a component of this as well.
Yeah.
Absolutely, I do the shock of reality. We used to do, we used to let um. Kids switch and and be the foreman, right? You you're the foreman this month, but you need to, you could, here's your. Yeah, you got it's paychecks to all five of these other kids, your materials, your this, your that, your gas, your rent, your everything. And inevitably, every time they come up broke at the end, I mean, every time they were broke. But it was a realization that. Gosh, maybe it's not as easy as, you know, e- everybody is telling me it is.
So capitalizing, you said community partnership, so I've got a list of things that we'll we'll go over, but let's shift gears. So we'll we'll take what you said around academic, we'll shape that into some goals and bring that back to you at the August board meeting. Um let's shift to our families and communities and we've touched a little bit on these. Uh what I've heard from the board already, uh leading up to this was. The need to standardize school to home communication practices across ours, all schools, all classrooms. Uh we talked about engaging community members in a long range facilities planning process. Uh last month, uh we talked about. How do we get families that actually? Wanna participate, do something too, so engaging families in potential bond work and other improvement work. Uh like I spoke about early, we we wanna start a family steering committee that meets quarterly, so we're getting voices from parents. Uh a community and a staff steering committee. Uh our volunteer initiatives to get more, you know, kind of lower the drawbridge to get more uh. More grandmas, more more people in our school reading with our students, we know that's a research based. Uh practice as well as increase our community business partners. Um that's what I had so far for that uh community and family engagement. Uh again, what here, what are what are we missing here, what needs to be elevated uh in terms of the our kind of community bucket?
Cause we've got the three buckets in the presentation, they're not matching up what's on the board. Oh, what are you doing?
I've seen a couple have been added. Uh as I had conversations over the last week, I've added a few bullet points. Good question. So communication was the biggest one, I think we heard from our stakeholders was we have to improve communication. One of the things we're gonna talk about is. Parents square, so some of you are current parents and some of you are previously parents, uh or still parents. So um parents square is we've kind of changed our whole communication of how we reach out to parents, so making sure the board. Those of you that don't have parent square accounts, that we give training and creative accounts so that you can see the communication going out, so that's one of the things we're looking at.
I will say it's. Helped me personally, like parents where as long as you don't miss the application, yeah, yeah. It has been a little bit easier some things. I almost think we need to. Like I said earlier, incorporate. More community partner into it, giving them access to it. So you can. Like we were just talking about, loss of federal funding where we're gonna have gaps that the school's gonna take over. We've got community partners that possibly could help. Give them a chance to say, hey, we need some help or hey, we have help to give.
So a way to connect with three members that aren't parent parents, so they still.
Almost like what Brian Cochran, like the. Amazing ecosystem of businesses like. It's like even how do we like highlight the work they're doing within the community and. You know, grow where it's necessary, where even like honor those businesses. Uh okay, I have a hypothesis that I'm curious what the group thinks about because communication is super general and high level. But when I was looking at the data that we put together like. The the like real outy parts. Wrong communication was around bullying and perception of how that was handled. And then sped, which we have all talked about, and so. I wonder if. Somehow we address communication around those two things, if we would really see. An increase in this level of satisfaction around communication um and. Cause I I don't know about you Eric, but like I'm getting notifications all the time, I'm like, oh my gosh, it's actually. Like overwhelming, so I think there's actually a lot of communication going and I just. I wonder if that's being highlighted because of those two pain points rather than parents square.
Like it's almost a subset of the communication.
Yeah. Uh so I I don't know what you guys think, but I'd be curious.
Can I add a couple of points to some parents square, so I I think these ideas are wonderful, we're in the second year of of parent square and. Whenever you're. Rolling something out for the first year. You kind of wanna just like, okay. What was that, what did we, why didn't we get into parent square and we got into parent square because it didn't, the the last tool didn't meet certain baseline. Functionality, I think what we've proven is we can meet this baseline of functionality and now we can grow on that near too. Parents square actually has a component called community groups, where you basically can say, this is a C T E community group, here's a Q R code. Send that out to people through parents square, or you send that out through, you know, postings that are at each school and you can snap. Picture the Q R code and all of a sudden now you're a member of the C T E. Community group and now all of then it takes for us is cross training Ryan Cochran on, hey, when you're putting together a C T E. Um you know, monthly newsletter, you're sending that out to that community group of people that have signed up and. So that's one easy way that we can grow and and you can. You can do a lot of that. It it think about community groups for anything, whether it's long range facility planning or C T E or. Um or special education or bowling like initiatives that you wanna promote, so I think that's a really. Really, it's 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 right there and it's ready to to kind of expand into, um I don't see that being a a major lift in any real way. Yeah.
That might be better, cause I I'm, while I want more out there, I'm also concerned about inundation, but I don't wanna like overshare with everybody.
You get to choose too, right, as a as a parent and not only that, it's it's for parents, but it's also community members who aren't.
Yeah.
Active parents with a student enrolled in the district. Currently aren't in the system, but you can also create opportunities. Where they can. Join in and then subscribe to, I want regular news from the superintendent, or I want regular news from the board, or I want. C T E updates or athletics updates. Um and so I I think there's ways to. Open, expand opportunities for new types of communication to existing families. As well as in start to invite community members. Who wouldn't otherwise be engaged in communication to join and then and then and then we say, here are the groups that you can. You know. Sign up for, basically, you you're signing up for a a mix of newsletters that come from the school on a variety of topics. Would not be hard to accomplish that this year.
So this is gonna be a big ass too. But I also think apart from the digital. Stuff that we've got going on. We need a physical presence in the community and at. At events, so I'm talking like splash and dash, the fair. The rodeo, something like that, where we've got some sort of face to face interaction. Possibly with the Q R code saying, hey, here's the group you need, but that's gonna require a staff person that's knowledgeable. Uh and I know that's.
For a second, you were asking to be on a splash and dash team. But I have to tell you about this awesome idea that we were planning right before. The twenty twenty four school, two years ago, um. So those. You've been to the high school. In the fall on a Saturday, there is. A thousand families there uh throughout the day and the plan was to put. Q R codes as well as ways to to reach them on a Saturday of. Give us your feedback, what's working well with the school district, what's not, so I think it goes to you that, how do we have a physical presence outside the community beyond? Our regular school mindset, you know? And I'll do it in a splash and dash team.
We even, I mean, like. It like that Saturday, like we could just do donuts and like. Come get a donut. Sign up for a group like.
That would be awesome.
And then get a donut.
Yeah, thank you, sign up for two firsts, you get two donuts.
Right, your choice.
Yeah. That would be fun to do.
I have unbelievably impressed with some of the students I've seen come in front of the school board. Maybe they can do that. Yeah, or you know, even like you said, we have so many events in this town in the parks, you know, booths set up everywhere and. You know, if they could set up a booth just to commit. I think a lot of older folks in this community would be. Impressed and more likely to pay attention if it was students there talking to them about, hey, you know.
And vote for a bond.
I was actually going towards with that face to face presence, the next bullet point, which is the facilities.
Oh, yeah.
Someone that can talk about the need and say. Have have conversations with the public that aren't necessarily in the school system. But are voting members of our community and say, hey, we've got a need, here's a picture, look at this.
And uh and I think a a piece of this too is. Is going to the community not just when we need your vote, but having a regular presence. Ongoing, uh we talked to, talked to the central Oregonian today and we'll have a monthly column, just updating people in print.
I think we're missing a follow up and that we need a consistent practice and opportunity to elevate and highlight. Our district and programs and people in it. Which means we are like. Making sure that people outside of Creek County, when they hear you're from Prime Go Go Home, they they do cool things over there. We have programs at the O S P A conference where we highlight our people. We have our kids who are doing amazing things, elevated and shown to the rest of the world. We nominate people for C E T Teacher of the Year or culinary Teacher of the Year, most wonderful things that we get and we tell the world about it. But we don't have anything in there that would have us working on that elevation and highlight. So I don't know where that bullet is, how to describe it, yeah, the other. Yeah, the other thing is. We have a tremendous underutilized opportunity, we have three foundations. That are dedicated to education and this, you know, we have the Creek County Schools Foundation. We have whatever we call that thing that the Betterment Fellowship is under, and we have the Creek County Education Fund and Community Foundation. And we hardly interact with those three, I know you're on the board and. That we should be, other than scholarships, that's great that we do scholarships, but there's so much more that we can support. And and I think frankly, if we wanna do more, we're gonna have to go engage the private sector to bring more money in, cause we aren't getting it from the state of Oregon. So. And how do we, how do we build that into that?
Okay, oh yeah. It's a good one.
To me, that is more important than the bond. Cause frankly, I think we're gonna spend a year working on the facilities planning and the bond comes in after that, I'll then we're gonna go for a bond this year, I don't know why we would spend time on that.
Yeah, I think that timeline's right.
Might go for some. Birds probably, we'll see.
Okay, anything?
I have a, like, and this needs to go back, um. Do we, what is our participation by parents in student conferences? Student teacher conferences.
Could give you exact percentages. So at the elementary, we're typically between ninety five and a hundred percent, uh very, very common to have. To have a hundred percent of elementary fans attempt. And then you have a gradual decrease uh from sixth, sixth grade to twelfth grade. To I I wanna say in spring of twenty twenty three, we were at. Seven percent.
It's really low at a high school.
Yeah, wow, so so yeah, you you have the whole and it. It does align with the gradual release of responsibility, the students, right? However, sometimes I think that might be a cop out we use to not, to not get parents in the building, we try to conference plus.
Yeah, and we had, there was a discussion last year around doing like a a awards event perhaps around conferences and. Kind of just beefing up like something we would wanna do at another point in the year, offering it at the same times conferences to. Get more people in the building that night.
But important, I I.
Impressive elementary number, I would not thought it was that uh high, but then, yeah, that's a little discouraging to see it drop off like that.
Let's um. We'll. We'll add that, um because it is important to track and I don't wanna give up on high school conferences and we've done some preliminary work. Uh that I think. And connecting conferences to other reasons why parents need to be there, whether it's like a scholarship night, so that way they're getting two or three birds with one stone. So yeah, we'll we'll put that, we'll put that in there if it's not um. Anything else for our blue bucket before moving to greens?
Very specific.
Okay. The list from what I've heard previously from board, so we've talked about sped protocols and behavior systems, that particularly ties into. Safety, classroom safety, school safety. Uh anti bullying, uh Kelsey, you touched on the bullying element has has been something we have been chasing down. And we have made improvements, um we've systematized uh. The response from administrators so that whenever there's a claim of bullying, there's a a absolute protocol that they're required to follow, but. Still a lot of room to get uh grow. Um uh facilities improvement, so that kind of got connected here, long range facilities plan. Uh. Anna, uh our our typical financial goal, we've had this, I think, word for word in the last seven strategic plans, but. Maintain a strong and stable financial pa- uh position through careful planning, Anna had a couple sub bullet points. That did you wanna chat about?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um. When you talk about maintain a strong and stable financial position, there are a lot of. Strategies that go into that, some of them are big, some of them are small, and you see some of them in. The budget preparation or in just things that we talk about throughout the year, but. At this time, I feel like there's one thing that really needs to rise to the level of board attention and that is that we need to figure out. I think this goal is fine the way that it is, but just so that you understand, I think one of our major strategies that we need to have supporting this goal. Is we need to figure out how to reduce our first rates. The amount of money that we are spending to put into the purse system. That doesn't bring anything additional to the students. I mean, it's a great program and it's a staff attention, you know, it's it's a, but every, you know, everyone in the state has purse, so it's not like they're competing with other school districts. By having hers, so just having it as an expense and when these. Rates go up. To the levels that they're at, it's just so much money. And if we can find ways to bring those down, um I think that that's. Gonna just really help us and let us put more money in directly towards students, so some of the things we could do is um. Anytime we get a chance, put money into our purse reserve. Because there's an opportunity sometimes to actually. Put money directly into your purse. Into the purse system. And we get credit for that and. The U A L, you buy down the U A L, the unfunded actuary liability, not that that cleared it up at all by.
Oh, yes.
The U A L, just know the U A L means. There's more. Money going out than there is coming in, and so it's a this big negative number, and so you can buy down that negative number. And there's a program, a matching program, that if you put money in, you can get twenty five percent. Matching funds, so that's basically, I mean, to the school district. It's like free money. It's not really free money, cause it's all tax free funded and all that, but you know what I mean, um. And you have to get in to this um. Law, it's not really a lottery, it's a first come, first th- first first come, first served signup thing in July, so the more money we have set aside in a purse reserve to be able to do that. One time is right, would be smart, and then the second thing is just watching for. Opportunities to do more purse bonds if. If it's the right time, and there's so many. Factors that go into the decision of this is the right time to do it. That um it's just very complicated, and so I will just um over the next. This coming year, try to give the boards some education, just in regular board meetings, take up some of the financial. Time on the agenda to just do little um kind of little snippets of information about how that works. And then also I'll be participating as i- if there's any statewide conversations about. First bonds at all, I'll try to participate or get the information somehow, um. Because it's not something that just one individual school district would do. Because it's not something that just one individual school district would do. The last time we did it was two thousand two and two thousand three, and it was. I don't know, probably fifty school districts or something that all went together and shared the cost and, uh. So that's something I think that would happen again, is it wouldn't just be one school district going off on its own trying to do this. So I just wanted to let you know that that's kind of top of mind for me, and so as we make decisions about what to do. When we have opportunities with finances, that would be something for me that's a high priority. And I will need full board. Agreement on some of these things because I can't decide to just go out and get first bonds, it takes a board resolution and, you know, a bunch of things have to happen.
Well, appreciate your foresight on that.
It takes forward judgment too, I mean, when I learned that most not interesting committee I served on. Was there were three things that influenced that. One was if you have. Ball, if you're expecting to have volatility in staff levels, that's going to hurt you. If you're expecting to have volatility in revenues, that's going to hurt you. If you're expecting to have volatility in market rates, that's going to hurt you. And the board, only the board can make the ultimate judgment about where we think those three, those three things are going to be. It's not fair to say to Anna. But you decide, then we'll blame you if you're wrong, but we have to collectively do that.
We all get collective credit.
Yeah.
See, Anna, I mean, how, it's numbers in the millions of how much the district has saved over time because of that decision made in two thousand two.
Ten or fifteen million. Wrong how? I know it's at least ten, uh, it was approaching fifteen, awesome.
So we'll kind of unpack those sub points, but we wanted, as Anna were talking about goals, it's like. Okay, we can keep the same language, but the board needs to know of these additional sub points that are, that are so important, that we'll need your. Your, uh, priority and your, your judgment on. Here's our performing arts, uh, it made it performing arts program, quality enhancements is something that, uh, we've seen, uh. Particularly, I want to say our band program, uh, has really seen some drastic improvements. And, uh, and even our, uh, performing arts, but we're wanting to continue to push on that to get real quality, uh, performing arts, because we know that's. We want every student to have a niche in our school, then a place to belong, and for some students that is performing arts, so we want a really high quality program. Uh, again, extracurricular involvement, that's, that's been a theme that this board has worked on for years and has really paid dividends. Uh, and then stability and leadership, this was one of those themes we heard, uh, from, from. Uh, surveys, staff particularly as well. And then student leadership and board representation, uh, that's something that I, I've had a couple of conversations on. What are we doing with our, our student leadership program? Is it just making signs for homecoming or are they learning? Leadership skills and out in the community doing service projects, so looking to maybe do a revamp there. As well as, uh, we've talked a little bit about how do we get more student voice to the board, uh, and maybe having a student come and present. A quarterly update or what's going on, we heard from, was it Natalia Crass and, and another student, and it's just. So, so, uh, you know, I get so proud hearing from our students, are articulate and well spoken and. And, and being really successful in school and beyond.
Joel, I'm assuming that you guys, uh, probably do like student body leadership, like they elect their president and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if we could revamp that in particular and say, hey, if, if you want to run for student body president, that's amazing, but part of. The scope of your role is that you will be the liaison between your student body and the board. And, um. Here's, here's what that looks like and, you know, assigning some duties out to the whole kind of leadership committee, but. To me, it's like, it's almost like we're, if they're going to sign up for leadership, we, like, I personally want to honor them doing that and give them that real world. Example of being able to say, look. Dear, I wasn't just making posters for homecoming or like planning prom. You know, I have experience going in front of a leadership committee, I can be, you know, all these kinds of things that look great on resume.
Yeah. I'd just love to bring the student government, uh, in front of the board to just say, here's what, here's what we want and then.
We used to, we used to have a once a year appearance.
Interesting.
Well, I, I think it should be like regular cadence.
High school group in, the next meeting we'd bring the middle school.
I love it, I'm here for it.
Yeah.
Thank me like I did that and nothing, nobody died, I'm okay, you know.
Still, still.
It's normal.
Yeah, so that's something that, that I think would just pay dividends across the board, so.
I think so.
And I think we should emphasize to, to that, um, group or committee. To, to get full representation, pioneers, you know.
Yes.
That's great, but if we don't hear from those kids too. Um, then we're, we're leaving a chunk.
The, the extracurricular involvement isn't broad enough. The, the goal of our programs in the last several years has been to make sure that every kid had a connection to an activity or a person. Because a kid who is connected doesn't bring a gun to school. And if we can just get to them and make sure they have that reason, that's way better than buying barbed wire cyclone fencing. But extracurricular involvement in and of itself is not the goal. Also, I would say it needs to be athletic and extracurricular, but also. I think that needs some.
Now, now, not quite right, the way it's wording.
That's good, that that's. Um, and then in anti-bullying campaign. I don't know how to build this into. A whole lot of trouble is coming about in the transportation system around that, it seems to be where that occurs. I'm hoping that now that we have a. Little more, a little different approach to leadership there that might resolve itself, but I think we better watch it very carefully.
I think it's a real good point as if a. Review of social media outbreaks regarding the district is any sort of assessment. Transportation, issues on the bus. Usually encompasses, uh, over fifty percent of those. Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's a high, it's a high percent.
I hundred percent support Kelsey that we need to be intentional about focusing on the anti-bullet, that is just a constant complaint.
Well, and I think a part of that here is, is before something happens, even educating parents on what they can expect about. Communication and, and like. Because of Sean, like I'm super familiar with FERPA and I understand that, you know, he can't tell everybody everything, but. If I didn't know that and I was a parent and somebody did something to my kid, I'd be like, I'd be pretty hot, you know, and.
Rightfully so.
Uh, but if I knew that going in, like. To his conversation, what cause the legal ramifications are, then, then that's a really different conversation versus perceiving that somebody's withholding. Information about my kid, like.
And coaching our administrators on how to have those conversations because. Can't tell you how many times a parent calls, calls to the district office, say. And they won't tell me anything, and, 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 and the conversation has to, has to not be, oh, and I can't tell you anything. Here's our band building management plan, I can't go into, you know, such and such information, but I can tell you that these are the consequences. Uh, based off our building management plan without going into any information about a specific student. Just like I'd protect the, the privacy of your student, you know, so, so coaching our administrators on having that conversation because. Parents are hot, uh, a- as they should be if, if they feel their students are being treated right.
Really, talking about performing arts during the. I feel very strongly that does not belong in the culture box, that belongs in the academic box. It's a state standard for academic instruction. For many of our students, not many, but, and some of our students, that is their only reason for coming to school. Because of whatever their connection is to using drama, band, whatever that is, and it just, it's more important than being. Down in the culture box, it's a main thing. That isn't an afterthought, yeah, it doesn't belong in the green box, it belongs in the yellow box, I think. Easy fix. Um, we should probably also have. Care for our staff. I think it's really important we acknowledge that. That it's important that we care for our staff.
Like. I want people, you know, Joel's point earlier, like, when they hear of a job opening within our school district, be super excited, be like, oh my gosh, this is the place to work. In, in Central Oregon.
And we, we, uh, say, it'd be an interesting data project to look at. How many staff we're able to pull from the surrounding regions, uh. Previously, um, the last couple of years, it's been, it's been in the headlines a little too much, uh, where it might be hurting us, but. We certainly were at a point where we were pulling not just any staff. The best from, from the surrounding areas and will be coming, uh, not only a destination district for families, but for staff, this is the place to work. Eric, anything we're missing?
I'm just listening right now.
It's a good conversation. Jen, from your experience working in our schools, anything on, you know, the culture piece that needs to be added to this?
So a pretty big question. Just, I think, you know, we, you and I talked a lot about sped. And the getting, making sure that our staff is well trained, perhaps I feel like when I was saying I wasn't well trained. Um, but I know it's come a long way in the last few years, so, and then like, just to care for the staff, I like. I like that, I don't know what that in details, I don't know, Scott, what was. What your thoughts were on that, but, um. I think instead of just like verbiage on a piece of paper, your actions speak louder than your words.
Yeah.
And so I feel, I mean, like s- some of you have really strong beliefs on a lot of this, but my strong is. The whole sped protocols and behavior systems, because I hear stories, you know, and it's, it's gut wrenching, like, I'm like. Well, I didn't have to go through that, but, um, I mean, it's hard in, on all levels, it's hard just, you know, not, not having, you know. Sped kids in your classroom, let alone having. Three quarters of them as that, so, um, but care for staff as well, and I think that kind of goes along with the stability and leadership, I think once you have. Stability and leadership and your board is unified, um, that's going to get a lot, I, I would hope that would get a lot better. You know, our staff was. Had a very rough year and, uh, they, they held on. By the grace they held on, and so, um, I appreciate that very much, and so, whatever we can do to see what it would look like. You know, just instead of just words on the paper, what can we do to show you, what, what tools do we, what, what can we do to help assist?
One of the awesome things Anna was able to pull off, uh, heading into next year, even with, uh, budget, you know, we, we cut essentially three million dollars this, this past spring. But one thing we maintained was, uh, our staff culture funds. Where each, uh, each school in psych has a. Called a culture, but they have a, and it's not a lot of money, but allocated to, um, grading events for staff to improve culture. Um, so we see that in, they use that for. Staff potlucks or coffee carts where it's just the little things that just. To let staff know that they're appreciated on a, you know, it's a coffee cart on Wednesday of your principal coming to your room and saying, hey, what? What can I get you? It's those little things that do make a difference, so and we were able to maintain that through, um, some cuts.
Yeah, because I think too, looking at, at the data, like. One of the things that stood out to me was, uh, around staff feeling recognized, and it was like kind of one of those like, they're like, yeah, sure, like I. But it wasn't like, oh, I strongly believe that I get the proper recognition, uh, at work and, um.
There's, I think, two missing bullet points. Uh, in the yellow box, I think we need to mention the, uh. Inclusive curriculum adoption. We do have to do with social studies this year, I think.
We've reclaimed that one here.
Whatever we're doing, there's always something, but I would underline the word inclusive there, for God's sake, don't just go out and do it, leave people out, it turns out.
Yeah.
Get a whole school board elections around that. So, I want to make sure we highlight that.
Yeah, right.
Then, um, in the, probably goes in the blue box, but current and inclusive policy adoption.
You know.
Process, yeah, we got those up to speed, let's keep them up to speed and let's ask lots of people's opinions along the way.
Think we might have missed something on the academics too, that we need to make sure it doesn't fall off, thinking about our budget. Insolidations, like cuts, but yes. Um, our ESL program. Oh, that as far as going with like reading and writing and math and kids falling behind, that's a group that can easily fall behind, they're not supported. So I think that needs to be.
A lot, a lot of pressure. And, uh, to just maybe add on to that a little bit is. The ESL program and also services to our Spanish speaking families, that is a group that, um. A lot of times feels left out, uh, so making sure we're intentional and elevating that as a board priority, I think is mine of that.
I'm going to safely assume there. That communications that we have out to parents, they also have it.
So I was just pointing to, uh, there, that's one of the awesome features of Parent Square is. We can send it out in English and, and whatever families have selected. If, if they get it in, let's say, Spanish, and then they can write back in Spanish, and when it goes to the teacher, it goes in English.
Yeah, it's whatever like, whatever language the, the family selects, there's multiple. It'll auto translate, it's using Google Translate, so it's not always perfect, but it's certainly better than us having to manually translate. And send out multiple things, so it translates whatever their preferred language is, and then they can type back in their preferred language and it translates back to English.
Yeah, really cool.
And so they could change it in the moment, right? Uh, and then we also create, we're, I'm working with. I'm working with staff, you can create like a, a group of, a, a group specifically for. Um, like freshmen, Spanish speaking families, and now there's, there's an individual group that, uh, that coordinator could send out to. Or could send out to the whole high school group and the middle school group, so, yeah, it was very robust in being able to build out in any different ways.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Parents for the win.
Right, and it's multiple languages, it's not just, we just don't have English or Spanish or.
It's like, you know, fifty, it's whatever Google has available, you know, it's whatever is available, it's like a Google, it's very nice, yeah.
Before we move on, anything else on our, on our green box?
All right, bring.
We, you jumped around.
Did.
Yeah.
Did you move the performing arts?
We, we got the performing arts moved in my notes, um, and what I can do real quick and maybe you guys can help is, uh, before we move on. We'll go through all the changes we've heard from the board, and then we'll incorporate that in the next, next version. Got a lot of updates, are you guys ready?
We did two minutes of scratch.
Let's do a two minutes fresh, correct? And happy update.
Yeah.
That was.
And to the minute, we're halfway there. You're right, I want to do, I want. Injust all of our previous.
Files are here too, so there's plenty more.
Got Scott, so I send the. So you make little updates and then, yeah, that's, uh, that was a good, I think I. All right, um so just thinking all run through what what I believe I heard from the board for each one of these uh and then if I missed anything, let us know. Okay, so for our our first bucket, um some additional things, a deep dive into uh our sped data. Are students classified right? Uh are there students that shouldn't be sped that have been identified? As well as a deep dive into our early graduates segmenting out uh. What the reasons are so that we can uh adjust accordingly. Uh a big conversation around what tools. Uh asking our staff what tools they need in order to support sped uh behaviors. Uh we added the uh ES uh ESL and our Spanish speaking families as a focus area. Uh conversation around vertical alignment, making sure that effort continues as well as. Um doing some standards mapping to make sure the sequence is right. We're covering everything. Uh include performing arts in this bucket. Uh supporting staff that are overwhelmed by sped, making sure they have the right tools as well as sped training um for IAs uh as well.
So you've also got sped in the blue bucket, so we got Louis.
I've got it in the green around behavior and safety. Um this is around more, I think, equipping. Teachers for the tools to help our sped students academically would be how I differentiate those.
Uh it can be more in one bucket.
It can be. Says the same thing, it doesn't.
Oh, and and then the uh curriculum adoptions that are uh exclusive of all. Thank you. Okay. Our next bucket, once you open buckets, just uh so on this. Uh making sure more community partners, we're talking about uh parent square and community groups. So that uh uh those that aren't parents can still get communication from the school, uh communication around key areas. Bowling and sped and what we're doing. Uh we talked about our policy adoption process and making sure we're getting uh. Feedback there, having Eric, I love you, the physical presence at events uh to form those relationships. Uh Kevin, I love the idea of not forgetting about conferences and we can do better than single digits at our high school. So that's. That's a a goal. Um Kelsey, I think you said letting families know what they can expect for communication uh. Have Saturday table events at the high school with coffee and donuts. I look forward to that. Um. And then Scott elevate and highlight CCSD accomplishments in the region and state through conferences as nominations um. And engaging the private sector and then connecting with our uh the different education foundations in in uh.
Oh, sorry. Go back to the yellow bucket. Um for services for um like at risk kiddos, like. Having kind of a comprehensive approach to that.
And then we did have a conversation about the middle, making sure those bubble bubble students.
Starting with stoplight program.
No, I was more talking about like a homeless or.
Oh, yes, yes. Yeah, you talked about extreme poverty.
Yeah, like I remember, you know, Jay Kaufman, like we have all these kind of community groups that are willing to help, but it's super disparate and so like, how do we?
Support for students in extreme poverty, yeah, alignment of services. Yes, thanks for catching that one.
Scott, does your organization still do a survey or on homelessness?
Yeah, um it's done. It's actually coordinated by C O C. Yes, I just don't have any.
Inaction with our homeless advocates.
The federal funding for that maybe is wrong. I would say that sometimes the interventions are sympathetic thing. What we did in the last week, Michelle Jones, all credit to her for this. When she put a washer and dryer in the Pioneer School and it made it arrange for the kids to get senior photos. Which was an issue we didn't even know they had. The food can't food cupboard, the cupboard wouldn't just open and take food if you need it. And then the showers, um you know, it's amazing how many of our kids are actually using our locker rooms and their primary. Get clean toys. It made an enormous difference in its life and then and the performance. Once they had those bases that.
And like you said, I didn't know anything about it until I saw a post on Facebook about somebody's doing senior pictures. And I was like, I didn't even know that was saying me.
I have like sixty kids who all had to take it or wanted to take it. And they all went out and met at Swift Rock.
All about dignity.
But it's also about being able to know those kinds of things. So if you want to be able to reach out and help or assist or do or whatever. You you can be able to do. Sorry, I know I don't have it.
I mean, it was dignity, but also kids needed those pictures in order to apply for some scholarships. So that gives them one, just, you know, how do you get in the Central Argonian? Graduates page if you don't have a picture, you want to just be one of the names on the list under all the pictures. I mean, it was so important to help new kids.
I think, uh, who knew? Just shout out for Michelle Jones to the de-stigmatizing these things where it's okay to go to the food pantry and and grab something, you know, and. And oh, you're on the bus to your senior picture. Awesome, you you know, and because that's a big piece, because teenagers, it's all about what your peers are thinking and and.
But it's a clean clothes. It's the having a shower. That's exactly, or the the essentials are there, right? The toiletries at the.
The prom guest closet. The clothes closet, there's a clothes closet, I think, high school.
There's the loft at the middle school. Be cool. Um so on our final bucket here, uh reduce UALs for bonds, keep an eye on that. Unfunded actual area liabilities. Is that close?
Keep the.
Keep that.
Goal that's already there, which everything I said was just kind of. You the board can just know about that unless the board wants that to be called out specifically.
I I think it's important. I think it's those called out specifically.
So I think what it would be is just find ways to reduce per rates. Everything else below that is the details.
Uh I've got on this one, uh working with our student body to um present to the board quarterly, uh middle school and high school. Uh working through that, uh rewarding the extracurricular involvement one to talk around a hundred percent of students connected to extracurricular athletics. Uh quality uh transportation, uh making sure the safety and uh procedures are there.
Need suggest on your student presentations, you can do that scientifically, not quarterly.
Uh and then uh also something around the staff recognition, making sure we're recognizing staff as we've heard that uh. On the surveys, staff. And then some staff, some additional staff culture pieces that we can we can be in there. Anything else on our three big buckets?
The the one girl down on the student leadership is making like the student body president, like that's part of their scope is. It kind of formalizing that.
Scope of the the job duties. I like it. Okay.
Are we leaving a bond in or taking it now?
Maybe I think. That was on this one, right? Yeah, I I don't believe the the timelines that I've seen are simply long range facilities planning. This year, that takes the whole year with a potential bond in the next year based on that. So. We wouldn't be engaging any community in that bond work. There would be a little bit of. You know, it's kind of inherent in the long range facilities, they mean as. So so I think it's fair to take out in bond language on any of our goals for this year. Yep.
We just take one off instead of putting more on.
Hey, we got one off.
Were we wanting more representation for those student presentations besides just our elected student officials, because we're talking about Pioneer?
Yeah.
Grizzly or somebody else. I'm not sure how they would represent, like would they nominate a member to go because.
Do they do they have student leadership for the school?
I don't know if they do.
That that's where we were trying out. I don't believe Pioneer has a separate student leadership. That's something we can, I.
School district, so. Uh maybe part of just the student body uh government is to include someone.
Yeah, a pioneer.
Pioneer and students can vote who's going to be on.
That's a cool.
Yeah, I'd like I'd like everybody to have a voice in that. Your grizzly male folks, your pal be folks if you're talking middle school and yeah.
Yeah, let's uh we can work through kind of troubles for you something.
I'm ridiculously excited to see this presentation.
And we also uh in through our recognition kind of system, we do recognize a different uh student each month. And we try to differentiate. So we're healing from different schools. Um but I think, yeah, a a formal structure to to hear around leadership.
Yeah, all our schools, my brothers would be hard pressed to pick one of their four.
I was gonna say, that's that's seven, be careful.
I'm not talking, they they go up and down and it's amazing that they're able to do so much with so little.
It's getting out. Actually, Pioneer brothers might surpass Palina. Uh Palina has seen a they're they're on opposite trajectories, so. So on next step, so just so you know timeline of this, so from tomorrow, I think uh Bree and I have an eight thirty meeting to. Uh get working on this. Uh we'll start incorporating the the feedback and input and develop a a draft plan. Uh over the next few days, uh the next the next week, we'll email individually the board saying, hey, here's. Here's the updated draft. Um please provide individual feedback. Uh we'll take that feedback next week. And then at the August eleventh meeting, we'll present a a final draft. And we always. In that final, we always tweak stuff uh as well before before adoption. So that's that's kind of next steps. Any questions on that?
Joel, do we get a dashboard this year?
We a hundred percent uh we love good dashboard, so we'll we'll. Yeah, uh yeah, getting back to our data systems like we had previously is so important. So. I I feel, I don't know if, forget what the term is for positive pressure. But it does saying, hey, we're presenting our literacy data to the board for teachers to know that, for principals to know that. It just elevates it and and puts just a stamp of seriousness on it. So I'm really excited to get back to my my dashboard days. Uh and like we talked about in the in our why on that article uh was. Continuous reporting to the board is essential for you guys to make informed decision and reallocate resources. Um so so. Long answer, yes, uh there will be a there will be a dashboard. Um one final thing before we jump into uh. Into our kind of logistical trains. Um another piece, so we'll we'll have these kind of big buckets that are uh our vision. This is the what we're doing, the academics, the community. And then another uh another piece that we're we're looking to implement throughout the district is it's so important. As leadership that we share our values and lead with those values. So these four are four and and we don't need to set set goals for these as. I was trying to think of like, you know, you typically don't set a goal for a value like. Be a loving father, you know, like it's it's hard to set measurable goals, but um for our values, these are the language that we'll use with our staff. Um putting students first, that through every decision, it's focused on what's best for students. Um better never stops. That's our continuous improvement. Um and and always telling our staff, you know, the importance of moving forward. We talked a little bit about staff culture and that take care of our people, take care of our staff, take care of our students, take care of our families. And then my favorite. This unwavering belief that we are going to win, uh relentless optimism. So these are those values that we'll lead with and you'll hear from our staff. Um as we kind of roll out the school year. So we'll kind of combine these two, but uh any questions on these?
Yeah, I have a question, Joe, because I think better is about to stop and we're not taking care of our people and I'm not optimistic about the fact that we have. Taken in the last year, we've removed the communications director, we've removed the deputy, the assistant superintendent, and we have replaced. Those three positions with Joel. And I don't think one person can necessarily carry that load for long. And I want to know what board. What the board thinks about how we can support our superintendent's success for this plant, this very ambitious plan of the business. Think we have to think about that. In my mind, Joel needs some flexibility to go out and hire some resources. Maybe it's somebody to do the graphics piece for him, as much as he loves it, maybe he doesn't have time to do that. Um some, you know, some way to to help us, maybe somebody to help us with the communications, I don't know. But I think us expecting. A superintendent to maintain the pace that we have now set is unrealistic and does and betray all those.
Yeah, it's not kind.
And that's what I think is all. We're in charge.
I mean, I'm with you, Scott. I don't I don't know.
I can speak a little too.
You, are you supposed to?
I don't know if I'm allowed to, uh but I uh I I think the communication piece, we do have a plan, but it is. A gap. Uh and and so I think. As as the team comes comes back, you know, everyone takes July off and as the teams come back, I think assessing what those needs are. Working with Anna on what's in the budget. I did, uh we were able to hire the person that I believe is the most productive. Uh administrator I've ever worked with, with um the ability that Bree has to crank out work and and do things faster and and. A higher quality. So that's a huge piece because we haven't replaced those three positions just with me. I do I do have Bree and. The the skill level is is through the reef, so that's a big help. But I think of all those things you mentioned, the communication piece of having. Having professional communications for our district is so important. And I didn't realize that until five years ago when we started communications up. We need to have a professional website. We need to have um someone who's always thinking through who's our, who are the stakeholders we need to connect. So. I think as 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 we get back in the rhythm of the school year in the next couple of weeks. Um that communication piece is the big, the big gap of someone where when the media calls. Right now, we're setting up a system where it goes to uh Anna, Bree, myself and team. And and that is a Band-Aid and not a long term solution. So that's the one piece of all those things you mentioned that I I think will want to be intentionally about having a plan for.
Well, it's, I mean, those are things that we list list. Wow, more coffee listed. Is there anything else that you see as a? Like a pressure point that we are not brought up?
At this point, you know, the biggest thing really is getting the boards, the focus and the goals. Getting the boards, the focus and the goals, and now we just bring the district in alignment with all those goals, so this is a. Like, once and we are a really good launching point to see. My biggest concern now is sped and transportation, um those those are are gaps, new leaders, um we're working on coaching models. So so I think I think your question and one Scott is appreciated and about a month. Early, uh whereas the team comes back, we see where the gaps are, I think that's maybe if there's just permission to. Bring that to the board, um.
That's where I'm after, we we can't manage your order chart and we should manage your order chart, but what we can do is. Is verbally commit individually that we understand an administration costs money. And that we reap the benefit of getting rid of these positions and dumping all that responsibility on one person. And I think we should be willing to say and come back to us and bring us your resource proposal and feel. Free to make the investments you need to make in order to deliver the plan that we outlined.
Yeah.
If we are not willing to do that, we need to cut the plan.
Yeah, there has to be accountability both ways.
Right, I'd agree, because a lot of our, well. Some of our bullet items revolve around communications and so. Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful, and what we'll do just put in a system is we'll plan to have, if nothing else, a report as part of that first quarter report back to the board of what resources are missing in order to accomplish this plan.
I think it's it's not only like what are missing, but I think. Like, I'm just like absolutely in awe in your guys' ability to cut three million dollars and still have an organization she. How you guys did that is is absolutely beyond me and thank you, but. If there are things where you're like that, this is not like a sustainable. Way to be operating long term, like from a staff resource perspective, I think. We should have visibility into that and start to create like some kind of plan because we don't want to burn out our people. Um, we've already asked a lot of our staff going through what they have for the last year. The last thing I want to do is is be part of a a board that. It kind of is like, hey, thanks so much, but also now do this, like, that's, yeah.
I think that's why this take care of our people is such an important value for us to elevate and keep in front where uh we're hearing from our staff, because I think that's what happened was. We just kind of stopped listening to staff and then all of a sudden these this. You know, fire starts brewing and then you have a spark and and all of a sudden we, you know, some of us were there, all of a sudden you're standing in a cafeteria with. Eleven hundred people staring at you and it's we missed something and it's because we weren't listening to to staff and family, so.
Scott, thank you for bringing that up. Um, it's important that when we notice things, we speak up. Um, I felt like Joel just does it with a smile and he's always asking about how your day is and how things are going with whatever. And he just sits there and just like, yep, 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 we're gonna get this done, we're gonna get this done, hey, Bree, we're gonna get this done. So I appreciate your willingness to always step forward and always ask and do, but. In that take care of our people, let's take care of our people, that's everybody, not just. Certain levels of people, we got to take care of. The person who's, you know.
I I appreciate.
Doing what they're doing.
One big thing that the board actually already has done and and this board has already done is getting it back to where we're having one meeting a month is a huge. Relief and uh for Tammy, for the for the whole team where when you've got. Three meetings a month and you're staying until nine thirty, ten o'clock going through policies, so um. The efficiency that this board was able to work through to get back to a regular meeting schedule, that in itself is huge to avoid that that burnout, so Tammy and I always. Smile.
There is one other thing to do in front of the plan that's pretty important. We have to before June thirtieth, fill the superintendent position on a permanent basis, we have an interim superintendent right now.
I've seen.
And the contract requires. That or has him as interim through June thirtieth, but sometime in that twelve month window, we need to fill that position. Or whether it's with Joel or with somebody else.
Eleven months older, I know.
So. Just keep that in mind, I don't know if we put it in the plan, but it's it's a process to do it. Our next, and it's really important, that's part of that stability of leadership, that's probably where that fits right there.
Seven hundred processes take how long, nine months?
Hiring processes take a long time to do big searches.
So we have, we built into the interim contract a six month.
Yep.
Check in with the board, so it might be good to. The next one, I believe, is in December, so maybe that's where we have a planned conversation about options at that point.
And also just a major distraction when you do a business of the board, if you're doing that, you're not doing anything else. Probably should not move this budget with it.
Okay, so you'll hear these values, we'll report back in a month on what gaps in terms of communications or or what what's needed and then we'll put in December. Uh, for that superintendent contract review of potential options that we can even work on. We're ahead of schedule, uh so. Our other work session items, so trains, um particularly with new boards, so uh. The white bullet points, those are required trains where we don't, or sorry, the white ones are optional ones where we can talk and have a discussion of whether the board. Wants to engage in these trains, uh the yellow are required for a train, so. The first one is uh and and this might look a little different than your packet, I always make little tweaks along the way, um. So the OSBA Oregon School Boards Association, they've come, I want to say at least two or three times uh in person to do a new board member training. And Jen, you probably were, this is probably the first, that it's it's very useful of what's the role, what are some uh, you know, landmines to avoid? That's something that that that's part of work as being part of OSBA, our membership fees pay for them where we can request a new board training. Um, it's typically, I want to say, an hour to two hours. Um, it's something we'll want to consider, uh probably in the fall, maybe October, once um people get back in their their rhythms, but that would just be. Uh, someone coming and providing providing a training.
So I think the last time we initiated that training, it was in a board meeting, was that is that correct?
We.
Different stage sessions, okay. I was gonna say because.
Well, uh, I think maybe um the second bullet point, the insurance provider training, that was at a board meeting, and that's where, and and this is another um. Just want to say positive practice where.
Okay.
Yeah, where we have, so the district uh pace or insurance provider. Same as right, they they can come in and as a board member, especially a new board member, it's good to know your um professional liability versus personal liability. Um, and they do a fantastic job, we've done that as just an agenda item, and that's something if the board's interested. It it will be worthwhile to put that in in. Maybe the October board meeting, um just a forty five minute refresher or probably a thirty minute refresher.
October.
And they're online though, right? We would get them online or no?
Last time they actually came to Palina.
That, oh, yeah.
What's. What you. You're right, too, and then when our new board members joined, uh I sent the. The link online so you could watch the previous one of them presenting in Palina, but it might be, it's always. Best for people to come in person, that way you can ask questions and whatnot, so.
If we do it not in October.
Yeah.
They wouldn't have to drive all the way out to.
Yeah.
We could do it maybe in November or.
Yeah, we could do it September, November.
But don't they come from the valley?
Yeah.
That's a concern, for me, that was a concern coming in the winter months, just trying to get across the pass and.
So it'll be worse this year.
Oh, Dot isn't, you know, gonna be manning the roads anymore. Just thought.
So what if we targeted for that second intro, uh a November, a September or November, just join, having them join a board meeting? Um, and then.
With whatever, I just thrown things out there, sorry.
Uh, so we can work on that, and then for, do we want to do an OSBA new board, uh new board member training? It would be a an evening kind of standalone session. Is there interest in that?
I I would give it.
Important, yeah.
Okay. We'll we'll check their availability and schedule work session maybe uh later in the fall. Um, I just a reminder, the OSBA, they do an annual conference uh every year in November, November sixth or eight in Portland, uh. We have budgeted funds if any board members want to attend that, uh it's. It's usually very informative, uh different sessions, hear about other topics going on. Uh, and then, so that's completely optional, up to board members individually, just reach out to Tammy if you're interested.
Summer two in August.
There they they have a seasonal training and this is their kind of, this is kind of the big, the big one, but.
I I would highly recommend the OSBA call. Very. You do lots of options to explore in depth what you care about.
Yeah.
And then the general sections are all.
Uh, and as we've talked about OSBA, one thing that's on here to just uh a reminder and informative note for the board. We also are continuing with the many school boards, we send them our policies, they give us feedback, so uh. That that will just continue until we hear otherwise, that's been a actually a really helpful organization on just. Another look at policy, um so that that's something we'll continue unless the board or wants to change at a later point. And then finally, uh Eric has volunteered, uh if you're interested in Parent Square, uh if you. Uh, are a current parent, or if you're still a parent and don't have kids in the district, uh we'd love to get you plugged in with with Parent Square, so. Um, you can reach out individually to Eric on if you buy training and set up an account on that. Uh, our required trainings uh in yellow, uh we will uh. Sign you up for a a digital, this will come through your email, an annual child abuse training that's required by law, um you'll get an email from that. Kind of later mid mid August, so just a heads up. Uh, there's a mandatory Oregon Government Ethics Committee training uh around public meetings laws. Uh, that uh Tammy will send out, I believe Jen and Scott already done it. Uh, so Tammy will send out some information on that.
Do you have to do it every year?
I don't know, I hope not. I'm in a half hour.
I know.
Ridiculous.
I don't believe so.
To look, I don't remember, I don't remember seeing any requirement.
I hope so. One thing I know that you have to do annually in in April is your statement of economic interest, so uh Tammy does just an amazing job keeping us all in line and organized, so. Um, information around these will will come to your email, so just wanted to give you a heads up.
And that looks all scary, but it's actually really.
It's not that.
Um, that it's not really very inclusive.
We are like. Half hour head experiment, so some quick logistics, uh one of the things that we have kind of moved away from, but is something that. I I've heard from board members that are interested in in getting back into is site visits, so uh Kevin, for example. He said, Joel, I've never been to Barnes, or I've never been to uh, you know, the new pioneer, and that's such an important thing for our board to to take part in, and I I think seeing our staff. Or having our staff see you all as um. Wanting to engage, wanting to hear their voice, wanting to create positive influence in our school district. Uh, is so important, and this is one way, and and site visits are governed by policy, uh we can. I'll have that policy for you, it's spelled out, uh it has to kind of run through the superintendent, but I wanted to open that up to um particularly my idea. And and I take the criticism of our school food uh personally, because I eat it all the time and I love it. Uh, but if uh. I'll I'll just in my individual check-ins with you, we can organize if you do want to come, and I know a lot of you have busy works. Busy work schedules, so it's not just any time to to come, but I I would love if you're interested to um go around this fall, uh have you come to our schools? Have a school lunch, see that they're see that they're great, uh you do have to pay for them individually, but they're a great deal. Um, or we're we're compliant with OGC, uh but uh just know and just be thinking about your interest level in that of uh coming to our schools. Uh, walking around, seeing staff, because I think it's, I think we're at a place where um. We really want to lean into the positive momentum and and have our staff see you as as leaders and and allies in moving our district forward in a positive way, so. I'll reach out to you individually on that. If you know me. I love colorful charts, so these are uh, these are documents that previous boards have just been interested in annually. So I'm just going to give them to you and you can do with them whatever you want, just as informational. Um, the first is uh our annual organizational chart, which is interesting and huge. Um, each week are staffing based on student changes, so sometimes the numbers aren't exactly uh right as they they adjust weekly, but. That's just something for you guys to have. Um, the next one, cabinet roles, I am big on uh clarity, uh. One of the questions on our survey is do people know what's expected of them and their job roles, and I think. Uh, we've gotten muddled where some of our district, some of our directors even are like, what what exactly is expected of me, what am I in charge of? Uh, one of the things we've done, and this is again is a moving document, I'm sorry for the small prayer, I can send you electrifying copies. Uh, these are the cabinet roles as we've reassigned tasks, and this again is just informational, so the board knows. Hey, what is what is Bree as Director of School Improvement, what are the the twelve initiatives that she's leading? And more more importantly, this is in terms of so that. Our our leaders know what's expected of them, what's in charge, what they're in charge of. And then this is a new colorful term, uh this is our stakeholder engagement plan, and this is again a a kind of a living document. So, and part of this comes from. Scott, remind, having to remind me over and over again, what are you doing to hear from students, so what we did is we said, okay, our our key groups, the school board. Families, staff, students, and then businesses, what are we doing each month in order to get? To engage them in in our work, so this just kind of spells it out and will be something we'll be revisiting uh along the way as well. And I will all include these electronically as. I've gotten a little better not printing as much color, uh by going smaller, but I still still love that. And we're to our last bullet point, board committees.
And we, before you go there, then we have one other thing, can we send it out, can we update the? Phone number directory? Or how to reach everyone in the district?
Yeah. Like the the staff directory phone.
One page list of, this is Dana's phone number, this is Joel's phone number, this is Eric's phone number, it's really helpful. To be able to.
Oh, I see, I see.
Get out there, I mean. If on your bullet, will it happen?
Have a voice.
Who is it? A bunch, yeah, everybody will call it for it.
No.
Whiteboard's new.
So, uh, all right, our our final uh topic for tonight, board committees, uh from our last board meeting, we said we wanted to circle back. At our work session uh to to look through board committees, we also have this as an agenda item on the August agenda as well. If we want to kind of digest things for a while and circle back in in August.
So, I'm like, way good to that, if you don't mind, I. I think it would be worth our while to consider a committee structure that looks like our strategic plan. Where the committee brings you the buckets, so an academic affairs committee, a facilities and safety committee, a policy, uh uh. Uh, family, students, community and employer connections committee, and then I would say we need a fourth one, which is to return to the policy review committee, but that is a lot of work. Um. I would say we could take two of our committees and fold them into that, so if we took the Meadows Scholarship. For example, which we have to do once a year, and somebody has to do it, there is no reason that the members of the connections committee couldn't also fulfill that role. Um, the calendar committee, there's no reason that one of the members on the academic committee couldn't also serve as the representative to the. Calendar committee the one time we need to meet during the year, which would cover those, and then in addition to that, you've got the OSEA bargaining and the OEA bargaining. We have traditionally had two board members on each of those committees, which is a heavy lift. I'm going to suggest to you, based on a lot of experience with that, that two is overkill. That you probably only need one board member on those committees, because you don't do a lot of talking, you're there and you're important because you add. The imprimatur of the school board to the discussion, but. Does it take two to do that? The only benefit we got two is that if one is somebody else's. But most of those aren't going anywhere differently because the board member is present when they go national, so with that, you still got, that's ten. If you had two on each of those main committees plus two on the certified, the classified, that's ten committee positions to be filled. That's two each for us to decide what to do, and that would fill us out, so that's that's a. Generalized conception of what this could look like, I think it's important for everybody to realize that. Until we adopted new policy and. June, I think we did that, or we did it. We have not had a functioning committee structure, because our own policies didn't allow us to implement the kind of structure we would have want, we. The kind of structure we would want. We've done away with all that. We've got a blank slate and we can design something that works going forward. And I will tell you that that becomes very important because we can use those committees correctly constructed. To identify future candidates for the board and create a pipeline to keep the board full of people that have some experience and some knowledge. Coming into this world. But if we do this right, it's going to make more of a, a long-term difference, not just a difference for this year.
Would it, I agree. It would be possible to get like a, some kind of visual rough graph of like, how that all.
My, my thought is we. As we take that concept. You know, structure it and then bring that to the board in August to actually, uh, uh, make a point of this.
And the idea behind these is those board members, but they're well supported by staff who are on each committee. And then a couple of community members. And then we've got our, and maybe some students there tonight. That's the one gets dudes involved, give them something to do.
You're giving yourself your own advice.
That's like, that's such great advice.
It'd be great if we did have students.
So, uh, Tammy and I can bring that to the board in, in August and, and start. Be thinking about which one of those. Some more, uh, some more meetings at work in his life.
It was pretty blank, that little calendar of his.
I do want to move away from as a board is traditionally, the person in the calendar committee gets the same amount of credit as the person. On the, um, policy review committee or the facilities committee. Those are not equivalent jobs.
Is that why you want the calendar committees?
I suggest we roll that under, well, yeah, and it's, it will be hard to pick one because, you know, I'm interested in all that stuff. But at some point, we need to divide the conflict of work. Or you get. Yeah, and if you don't, you're going to get bogged down four or five hour board meetings.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring that to the board in August. Jen and I fought over who could give closing remarks and, uh, I, and I, I lost, but I'm, I'm eager, so. Uh, just, just as before, I, I, and I put this before we had our session, so it could have gone horribly, but, uh, I assumed. I was optimistic that I would be grateful, uh, grateful for each one of you and your contributions and your thought and your overall just care. Uh, for our staff and students, uh, so then just so much gratitude on, on each of you, for each of you and the contributions. Um, the board goals and the district alignments, this truly is our launching point where now we, as our administrators come back, uh. Next week, uh, we will use the, the plans and the ideas to, to make sure that all our arrows are pointing in the same directions to help students. Um, again, one, one thing you'll hear from me as we, uh, we move forward into next year where. It's awesome that our staff are feeling good about themselves again. But we also need to keep our pedal, our foot on the pedal and, and pushing our district forward. We cannot get complacent. And I think these, uh, goals and conversations is a great starting place to continue to propel us forward. And again, I'm optimistic. I think we're heading to a great school year, uh, and, and I think there's really good days ahead for, for the Great County School District, so. Thank you.
And I like that it seems like we are rowing in the same direction now. Um, we don't have, I mean, we literally are just, we're going in the same direction, as I think that's huge, and that is. Kudos to you, sir, in all of your leadership through the tremendous times that we've had. And, um, board members, thank you very much for all of your guidance and leadership. It has been. It has been great and I look forward to a very good year with, um. Our goals, it is a very. Big goals that we have, but I think, you know, we're definitely up for the challenge. I feel like we have a, a great group that can propel us forward. And, uh, you know, our culture of caring and about the, the staff and the people and the students, you know, I think. We definitely all have servants' hearts for sure. So thank you to all.
And I want to add to that and just say, you look where we were in December. People, it was really fun. It was a low point. And it's only. July now. We've been through an election that came in because it wasn't enough fun having the chaos we had. We had to have an election. And we got through that and we are in such a good position. In terms of, of the way we're operating, community reputation, the things we're talking about. I just want to say that I really think Joel gets a lot of credit per step because he didn't know any better. No, no superintendent mostly that had, had experience would have touched us with a ten-foot pole after that giant mess of December. And Joel did step in and he took him on cheerfully, in the optimistic way. We're here today and I don't want to leave aside the leadership he has shown and the contribution he has made in getting us this far this fast.
Absolutely.
I don't, it's against the odds and it has happened, so thank you.
As you know, we have the best cabinet in the state, so. Awesome team. Well, thank you guys and we're. Speaking of fast, we're forty minutes, forty minutes early, so enjoy. Jen can close us out.
At seven forty-eight, we are adjourned this meeting.